Strange, we'll speak, but not about that.
Yeah. See, and I'd have to see if I like the characters too, because I know they all have female protagonists. And I don't like it when they're dumb women. So if, are they, are they smart women? Like, are they causing their own problems?
They're, they're women that kind of.
Okay.
They, they're resourceful and they leave.
I could wait to check it out. Should I come in and get some more?
We did talk about, and I, in the actual ordinance.
Yeah, it would, it is kind of a recommendation.
And we could come back to that.
Not yet, they need four, and we don't have three.
I think a, a good plan. And has the table on three dozen.
Not yet.
Yeah, I think so. This was kind of preliminary kind of notes looking at it.
But in the actual ordinance, I just said, let's just be badass.
This.
I like.
Well, actually, I think, well, I like the hate, so it's good.
Not this time. I remember yes, remember the soul and all.
Do, well, like, oh, yeah, you got nice.
Well, um, I mean, again, these were just kind of.
I'm gonna do it, I'll take the warm.
Alright. Okay.
This is the break down of actualism, so let's take a point menu with next.
We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome. This is our working session for our planning commission meeting uh tonight. The general session starts at seven. So this is uh our preparation uh ahead of that. I apologize, I was out of town last month and then I can't remember what it was, the month, oh, it was a seminary graduation the month before. So I've missed two in a row, but it's good to be back. Let's, so tonight, once uh, once we start the general session, we will uh nominate the planning commission chair. We do that every July. Um, that's according to the bylaws, so we'll do that again. And then um, items two and three are, are related. This is uh to rezone. To rezone from R one eight to multifamily. Jake, do you want to talk us through um kind of what, what you see there? There's a, there's a, a phrase that was mentioned in the staff notes that I want to understand a little bit better when you get to that phrase with spot zoning. Um, cause I, I don't know.
Do that in order. Put the link, so I can add my staff notes there. So. Rejoin.
I think Teresa stepped away for a second.
Yeah. Okay, so we have two uh requests for rezones, both going from uh, R one eight to RM fifteen. And you'll see in my, in my notes, they say R one eight functions as R one ten. So on the zoning map, it says R one eight. But the city repealed that zone and put in place R one ten. So anytime it says R one eight, it's actually R one ten. Um, but, but they decided not to rezone the map. So this, just keep that in mind. Okay. Here we go. And did you, was, uh, which one should we cover first? Does it matter?
It doesn't matter, let's just take them in the order that they're. And.
Is this the right order?
Uh, the first one is uh six ninety north, seven hundred east.
Okay. So six ninety north, seven hundred east. And uh, so I mentioned that the request to go to RM fifteen, the lot size is point six two acres. Uh, in general, it's, it's compatible with the gen- with general plan, transportation plan. Seven hundred east in this location is not a U dot road. So that, that's always a question, cause anytime you're fronting on or accessing a U dot road, then that changes everything. But in this case, it's just the city. Um, if it were developed as an RM fifteen, it could include townhomes.
That's as dense as it could get with the property that size, correct?
Correct.
Just uh, like a duplex?
Uh, well, this one's point six two, the other one could include two units. This one. Um, Teresa, do you remember how many units developer looked at?
Particularly, are you talking to Jenny Lane?
Yes.
Up twelve.
Up to, up to twelve.
Up to twelve on point six.
Which, which it may not actually fit that. There is some slope issues on the east side. Um, wanna show you some photos, I was just over there. And um. This is the property from the front. Um, so existing home here. So. Um. There it is, gone up the side, so there's that slope. Um, we're looking into this storage structure uh that they have, uh, to see if that's actually legal. But um, anyway, uh. Property's not in very good condition as is. I think that's just a fact to, to be known to. No, that's the other property we'll get to. So there's some photos from today. They just uh paved Jenny Lane, looks great. Nice new asphalt. So. Okay, um. We'll get back to this, but we don't see significant impacts with the rezone. You know, all the additional traffic will go right on to seven hundred east. That's nice, it's not going through a neighborhood. Um. And if it were developed, uh sidewalk would be required, um particularly as this wraps the corner and goes, and then any other improvements uh as necessary. Um.
Did you say a lot that size could be approved for potentially up to fifteen units?
Twelve.
Well.
Twelve. But I don't know that it would actually fit. There are some slope issues. They'll have to meet the parking requirement, landscaping, uh handle their own stormwater, all of that.
So show them, well, yeah, we can go through.
Okay, there, so that's the property right there, point six two. So you know, it's a little bit bigger than, than a typical law. And it does slope up as it's going up Jenny Lane.
I'm Jake. Um, I'm looking at this project where it's outlined, that's the rezone area, but the applicant actually owns is it two acres, right about, one acre above that?
They do, they do. So they, they're, they're, they're doing future townhomes up in this area. So this is a stormwater basin.
Yeah, and so it's between the. Yeah, so it's between the stormwater basin where all those trees are. Um, they had already been approved for a four. Yeah, point three, and they have a four unit um townhome already approved, but not recorded.
Right, 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 right here, work for that.
It's the zoning of the.
Uh, glad you asked. Right there. So i- it is RM fifteen right next to it. Um, does bring it down. And this is, so this is the stormwater basin right here. And then uh, four units will go in right here. So. Um. Just a parcel, kind of show you the parcel line there. So general plan, we have it designated as, as medium density. Which medium density has a range uh, and of, which could be down to a quarter acre and then, and then pushing townhomes would probably be the, the top of that um. At it. And how it is in the general plan, um, it's at gross. Where you typically include roads and other things in it, so it's, it's less than a, a net number. That makes sense. And it is something that, when we do an update, next time we get to that, which is coming, I wanna change that. Um. Uh, this is from before, so the photos I showed today are, are definitely the, the more accurate ones. And again, point six two acres.
I'll just uh, question, I guess, cause it seems with the adjacent zoning consistent and staffing recommendation, I mean, it feels straightforward to me, is, are there planning issues that I'm not seeing? Um, with respect to this proposed change?
So it'd be right here. No, no, there, there really isn't significant issues. Uh, like I said, the transportation wise, it goes right on to a busy street. So I guess getting out of the property, that may be a little bit of a challenge. Seven hundred's busy, but not super busy. Uh, it is adjacent to uh, other townhomes, um.
And this is your project?
No.
No.
No, I'm just here because they, they asked me to come in case you guys have.
Well, I, I just had a question, if the, so they, they have um duplex or townhomes that they're putting on the adjacent property.
Right here.
But they're not built yet, correct?
So what, what their plan is?
Cause I guess where I'm going with this is I, I'm just curious, once this is rezoned, if uh, with the bigger piece of property, ditching the, the townhomes and putting like something more dense on there.
The townhomes is the most dense that you could do.
With RM fifteen?
Yeah.
So their, their thought was, they own, they own the upper piece, they wanna buy the lower piece and combine them as one piece. And then have an alleyway on the backside.
Right, right here.
Um, to access all of them, and then run them all up the hill facing Jenny Lane.
Okay.
So all the, all the faces would face Jenny Lane, but there would be an alley behind it.
So Jake, you're telling me there's not a risk that that could turn into a sixty unit apartment complex?
No.
No.
It could.
That thought around fifteen.
Not sixty.
Okay. That, not unless we rewrite the whole code and, no, so, no.
Cause if they come in next month and combine now that the zoning, if they get that approved.
Yeah, well, you know, there, there.
That's what they can do with that.
Yeah, there's, there's gap on units, there's also uh parking, uh landscaping, open space, stormwater, all those things have to be, so.
Uh, and I understand that, but when they combine the point six two with the, the four acres they already own, then then it can open those kinds of possibilities. That's what I'm just trying to find out. Is that an option?
Uh, no, no.
I think math wise, just to throw in a couple of things, I think math wise, they were looking at max like thirteen total.
Okay.
If they got both of them, I, I haven't looked at it, but I think that's what they were looking at.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
As long as they can get the.
This little sliver.
All, the retaining wall on the, on the retention pond above it to, to work. They would do thirteen units.
It'll be expensive because of the slope.
Okay.
And just an FYI, that um, document that I just sent you is just, uh, the applicant is for display only. It's not in, on for approval, it's not to be swaying you, it's just wanted to give you information of what they're anticipating doing.
And, and they provided this at their own discretion, uh, with, with the rezone. You really can't look at the concept plans. I say that after you have it. Uh, but however, with this property, there's not a lot of ways that you could do this with this zone. So it's, I mean.
They're gonna have front doors.
So the front doors would face the street. And then, yes, face Jenny Lane, and then, and then the access drive would be on, on the other side on the north.
Okay.
And as you know, there, we do have a housing demand. And so, and this does get offered, you know, townhomes offer a different price point, especially when they're for sale.
This is my neighborhood, this site. And it's a quiet, single family neighborhood, and they just built an elevenplex in my backyard. And this developer said they would do a fence right away. I still haven't, couple of years down the road. Still haven't done a fence. I don't know that, do we wanna do more of that? It's been dangerous and unsightly and devalue our homes, for sure.
Okay, how's it been dangerous?
So what they did is they did a retaining wall with all the mountain there, and they left both sides of the retaining wall with. Um, one side is probably, I don't know if you know, one side's probably ten feet. The other side's probably, and they filled it in now, but there's a three year old living in that house right there. And they, I saw them catch him many times to keep him from falling down that thing. And they didn't take care of it. She asked him to take care of it and they didn't for a while. So they do have the one side of the retaining wall filled in now, but no fence still.
Yeah, okay. Is that the fence we talked about earlier? So we, we actually did talk about it earlier in a staff meeting, and the city is reaching out again uh tomorrow.
Does that again make you nervous?
I mean, it, it. They have to do it, it's in the drawings, it's, it's part of the approval on it. Um, there are.
What location is this?
So that's the one, um, Diane Way.
Oh, okay, about Diane Jones.
That is.
For me, it, it, we had a beautiful view of the mountains and valley, it took that away.
Took that away.
Took that away. But for the people that live down on seven hundred, what they see is a retaining wall, and then they're doing another eleven units. So that's gonna be their view.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it definitely have a.
That, that is right here, right?
Um, I don't see where you're pointing.
Down the street a little bit.
That would be.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, yeah, it's not showing up, of course, but, so you're, you're up above. And one, one thing on, on property values, I've looked at this a lot, cause that comes up a lot. Um, is typically with real estate appraisals, it's apples to apples. So when they do like a, you know, a single family home appraisal, they're gonna look at all the homes in Morgan. They're especially gonna look at the homes within a mile.
It's like what it tells you, right?
And they can, they look at those, and, and then townhomes, they look at completely different. So they're not even comparing the two. So it doesn't, it doesn't lower your value, because townhome value is completely separate than, than a single family home.
If I went for sale, you see a black roof in my backyard.
Now, now that's a specific issue, and so, you know, if, if someone says I would have paid more because it had this beautiful valley view, and now it doesn't, then, then that, that's true. Um.
Yeah.
And, you know, I really have a lot of sympathy for that, because I'd hate to lose my views, even though I have homes all around me. But if uh, so, yeah.
Tony, you had something.
My, my question is, so Jake, even if, even if your next door, your single family resident home, and then the next door to you is RM fifteen, but being density. You're saying that doesn't, just asking, you're saying that doesn't affect property values?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, uh.
I disagree with that.
Well, this is based off of, of data, in, in empirical data.
Than exist in Morgan County. There are not a lot of homes, especially single family homes, for sale.
Looked that up too. And it said, sometimes it decreases, sometimes it increases. I say for what we want in North Morgan, it decreases. I don't, am I wrong?
There may be.
Taking a hit up on the hill, we're having a hundred and forty eight townhomes. What's gonna happen with the traffic when those hundred and forty eight townhomes come in?
Yeah, that, that is definitely gonna add a lot.
If, if I were the appraiser, I'd be looking for comps that are adjacent to um multifamily.
Yeah.
Uh, RM fifteen.
This is correct, it does affect the buyer.
Yeah.
Sure, and there, there may be buyers who don't want, I'm not saying it.
Here's the question, though, um. Uh, whether that's true or not, and it's a real issue, um, and, and I, I get that. I'm, I'm curious, did the zoning change? Uh, you know, that, was, was that already RM fifteen when, um, when those home buyers went in originally, like where you live?
Yeah, was that always that, or was it changed to? That wedding, sorry.
I, in other words, did the zoning behind you, where the townhomes are now, did that change while you lived there, or was it always zoned for that?
Not the same thing. They are friends and neighbors and she's a widow and that was her. So if I wanted to have a say in it, I should have bought it. Sorry. So I, I understand that, that but I do regret not saying anything.
Yeah, cause that, that's the, the question. If, if uh, nothing's there yet, but it's zoned for that, and you move in and someone builds, or they have a legal right to build, it's too bad, but can't really stop that. But if the zoning was changed from under you, um, then that's a different issue. Which is what we'd be proposing tonight. Uh, we're proposing to change the zoning from um, single family to multifamily. So that, that's a real, it's a real concern. On the other hand, it's absolutely consistent with uh, with that area, both sides of Jenny Lane would then be um, RM fifteen. What other?
Well, where's my concerns, you know, talking about, your concern was, you know, what if they combined lots? And then what would that allow them to expand to? And you were saying it was kind of gonna be contained by.
Ordinance, yeah, ordinance.
But, but I guess I, I'm still, even though I sat on the planning commission when a lot of that was happening, it was stuff that happened before I got there. And so I didn't know all the details of what had transpired, but I guess there's a lot of things up there that are really not. I mean, you, you got these narrow streets, the driveways aren't long enough to park two cars or a car and a truck. I'm just like, how did that all happen? I mean, was, was that neighborhood all built to ordinance, or?
Well, I, I don't think.
I think the neighborhood you're talking about is mahogany.
I am.
That is an HOA.
Private.
It's private, so it's not city owned.
Okay.
So it didn't have to meet all of the.
We're not talking about the same.
We're not talking apples to apples.
Okay, I just.
Just, just, just to help you out.
Hey, that, that helps, that, that helps a lot.
Actually, it was a special service district is what it was developed as.
Okay. Alright, that. Thank you. Do you have a comment?
Tony and I have seen this for forty years. What you're up against is the perception of single family homes. Then there, they wanna keep them that way. And the nuance you brought to us is mixed use kind of thing. I'm not sure, and even though the studies show people are excited about that, I'm not sure the average Morgan person is interested in mixed use apartments in their backyard. And so that's what we dealt, deal with tonight. Same thing I've dealt with for the last thirty years, is the perception, is that perception?
It's not quite mixed use, because it's just residential against residential. It's a higher intensity, certainly a higher density. No, 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 it's just.
Mixed residential use.
Yeah, it's just, just a higher intensity resident.
Mixed residential use, and that's, that's the question of tonight. Is which, which way you wanna lean towards letting the whole city go, like, of course, as it comes, as it, as it comes up. And the last time we've had it come up, they've all been, is they want to go with the higher use. So the question tonight is, on these two, perception wise, what do you, what do you want to see happen? I know the master plan, Jake guided towards, you know, I have that whole area, R one fifteen. And at this point, due to economics, people can't afford to buy a bigger nicer home, so they're just renting. So the market is for rent rentals, and that's why the builders are wanting to build those. Now, that may have helped, that's the age old, age old question, Tony and I've dealt with for thirty years.
Thanks, Ray. Any other comments before I move to the next one?
My question is, just to completely understand what our authority is here. Can, I mean, I guess we can't deny, but we would.
You, you, you could make a recommendation.
Recommendation to the convention, against it.
Or in favor, and then the city council uh will, will vote.
Okay. My question is just, where does it end? You know, we keep doing one more lot and one more lot, and one more thing, that all it is is townhomes. That's just disheartening, because that's not in.
Well, you'll have to remember, uh, uh, Creekside, Morgan Creekside, is that ninety homes, a hun-? I mean, we just approved a. Yeah, we just approved a subdivision of a hundred and forty four single family homes. So, you know, Morgan's getting, is certainly growing, because people have babies and families and jobs and economy in Utah. But we're getting some of everything. We're, we're, we'll get some downtown units eventually. We'll get some townhomes and we'll get some, a lot of single family as well. And then also the, the cottage homes, those are being built, um, and the townhomes um, as well. So actually, a, a pretty wide range of, of new growth. Um, compared to an urban city, which is definitely, you know, attached housing, where, where we have a mixture of attached and detached housing.
You're correct, Jake, we used to approve that. But I drive, I go, I go there this afternoon, and that, the development next to that, there's only one new basement being poured in that whole area. And in the past year, there's only been one home built, and there are several homes, and there are several lots that are vacant. People are not building single family homes, can't afford them, Jake. Over in the, used to call it the rucks of the vision, or they're by the new one.
Yeah, right, right.
Basement being poured currently. Last year, there's only one home built in there.
When, when you look at.
Not building single family homes.
Demographics and incomes and what people make, a lot more can afford a smaller home or a townhome than people can afford a bigger home, especially the up and coming generations. If you ever have a home to sell, obviously you can move up. But if you're trying to get into that, get into that first home, the market's just not there. I mean, for a new home in Morgan, you're seven hundred, starting up to a million dollars. Uh, where a townhome is uh, three to four hundred thousand, five hundred even.
Alright, let's look at the second.
Okay, let's, let's look at the second one. The, the, the next one is where you really dive into the debate and, and opinions and, and uh, recommendations. So this one is similar, uh, again, an R one eight to R one ten. Uh, it is a quarter acre, um, just bigger than a quarter acre. So the max that could actually fit on it per our zoning, as Teresa looked at it, was two units, is what could fit on it. Um, I did a little uh GIS research to see what's happened to this property. Nothing. Going back thirty years, there's just been weeds on this property, it's sitting vacant. I don't know why. Um, but, you know, it kind of. It's kind of sad to just see a nice property sitting vacant for thirty years. Uh, I don't know, when people. Sure. Um, Teresa, is this the same applicant on both?
No, separate.
Yeah, it's actually separate. He, ironic, but uh, separate, that's what I thought. Yeah, it's actually separate. He, ironic, but, uh, separate, that's what I thought.
I was wondering, um, if it makes sense to do the same one public hearing for both of these. I know I ask this every time, but, um, that, that's kind of what I was thinking. Gary, do you have a thought on that?
Um, you know, where there are different applicants and they're different parcels, I would do each one separately. And that, one of the reasons for that is, is that if there was a challenge, um, to anything regarding the public hearing, or that was, happened in the public hearing, um, it, it would kind of be a little bit difficult to separate the two out.
Okay. Thank you. That, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Okay, so here's a layout, uh, city property right here, Stormwater Basin on the corner. Um, weeds and concrete, and you can't skateboard on this thing if you wanted to, city sign there. Um, and then a little bit of a quarter acre, as I mentioned, as of thirty years, there hasn't been a whole lot of use in particularly buildings on the property. There are some trees on it. Show you a photo in a second.
So what was there originally was North Morgan School, right?
I mean, that's.
That's where Vivian needs to school.
Are we going back fo- forty, fifty years? Seventy, okay, okay.
There's nothing left of that structure.
Well, there was for a while. There was the front grating. It was beautiful.
Oh, really? But that's gone now?
Uh, similar situation in that, uh, R one eight slash R one ten all around, and then, uh, very close to RM fifteen.
Well, I know staff has the same recommendation for both of these. I don't see them as being all that similar in, in the sense that one is immediately adjacent. I can understand that. I can get behind that a little bit more than start carving out parcels here and there randomly just because the applicant wants to put two, um, you know, two units on it. I, I'm not as comfortable with that, but I, um, yeah, I'd like to hear whatever else, thanks.
I do agree with that, but there also is the point that we're talking only two units because of the limited lot size, as opposed to up to twelve units. So in that way, it feels like a little bit less significant change. But I agree with your first point, that do we wanna just start carving out?
There's almost your zoning map.
Look, poker dotted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pockets of different zones all over the place.
And, you know, as, as a planner, I think about that all the time and look at it when I have my planner glasses on, looking at a map. But then when I drive through neighborhoods and you walk or you bike or around, nobody looks at the zoning map and, and, you know, what's across the street or here or there, you know, it's nice to see things compatible. And, and in this case, two units in there on a vacant lot. You know, you can make the argument that it does impact it, or you can make the argument that it's not a significant impact, um.
Well, I, I don't think it's significant. I'm just wondering about the precedent.
We, we do have some cases.
And let's say we make a positive recommendation, city council approves it, someone else comes in in two months, and I say, okay, let's put a stop to this, and I say, why just approve the other one with the same situation? I'm more concerned about the precedent than the impact of the single one.
Sure, okay. I, I think, and that, that's why I brought it up.
What I've been seeing lately is people building these huge, single family homes, but doing an ADU. And so now you got two separate families living in a single family home. Um, lots of parking problems now. Where townhomes and stuff like that are regulated with their parking.
Well, the eighty-eight, or the ADU should be regulated to a certain degree that's.
Yeah.
Do we need to take another look at that ordinance?
It is, but we, we also have, we also have a forty-eight hour on-street parking ordinance. And if they move every twenty-four hours, or they leave in the morning and come back at night, there's just nothing we can do about it.
Have, have we had many detached ADUs bill?
Not detached.
Okay.
Lots of.
Lots of it.
Lots of attached.
Lots of it.
Yeah. And, and that's, you know, a state law.
Um. So there, we can kind of regulate it a little bit better with townhome sections because we can force them to have onsite parking versus street parking. Yeah, to, to start with, so it's a little, I mean, it's, it's never enough, but it's a leas- it's a little bit easier to, to have ordinances like that. I struggle with parking the most doing code enforcement because it's forty-eight hours. And if they move it that far, it's been mooned.
Man.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mayor.
So here's, here's what I kinda am feeling is, uh, if there's a vacant lot somewhere and it's been there for how many years? I don't think, uh, I don't think it's proper, in my opinion, to say it would be put to better use. Um, if, if we wanna, you know, if the person that owns the property wants to build on it or sell on it or something like that, but it's misleading to me to say that it would be put to better use than, uh, being vacant. Uh, at least that's the way I look at it. Um, and then I'm, I'm trying to be quiet because this is right by my house. And I'm not against people developing, I'm not, but you made a statement, Mr. Chair, that, that sometimes, um, change, change this to build that, uh, when we might wanna look all throughout the city, not just changing everything because a developer has a desire to put a whole bunch of places on it. And I think that's what we need to be careful about. Uh, we have made mistakes in the past, uh, which down the road, it's the residents that kind of, kind of deal with it. So that was just my two bits. I, uh, I, I have, if I wanna leave a piece of property vacant, and then I go to the next phase, and my kids wanna leave it vacant, um, I don't think we can, can put in the word that it devalues it, or we can have better use of it. Because it's whatever, whatever that property owner desires to do with it.
Yeah, I, thank you for those two comments. I absolutely agree. I struggled a little bit trying to understand how, because it's been vacant, so let's put something on it as an argument for it. Um.
Well, I, I think we have to remember that cities don't build housing. You know, it's builders and developers and homeowners doing that, and, you know, it's their property, right? And so we, sometimes the cities get a lot of pressure in the public and the news about, about not having enough housing, but it is the private market.
Sure.
That, that, that generates that and requests it.
Tony?
So I, I apologize. I'm gonna ask a silly question here. So as, as a developer, what is my advantage of putting a duplex, or excuse, essentially a duplex on that piece of property versus, say, building a single family resident and selling it? And that's my question, will these be rented?
The du- the duplex, this property will be.
Rented. So in, in common to perpetuity. Yeah. So that's, that, that's the reason that they were, they can sell them and they can have a steady income.
We, we can speculate that, but, but, you know, you don't know for sure. You know, somebody could buy it and own or occupy one unit, you know, and, and rent the other. A lot of people used to do that with duplexes. I'm just saying, you, you can't completely go a certain direction based off of speculation. We just have to look at the facts and, and make.
I suppose.
Facts.
And the facts in this case are, is it appropriate to rezone this? That, that's what we're trying to understand. Is, is it appropriate based on what's around it and what the general plan is? That's, because that's really the only question here.
You can't guarantee what's gonna happen, none of that, you can't even think like that. Really, really.
And I'm still not a huge fan of this podge podge, even though it's not a significant thing.
Pass. We've been guarded against, it's called spot zoning, some new kinds of, spots here and there, different zones. Even on the way to us down the last, you're right.
Uh, when you're there in person.
It's still the city, the city, that's something we want, so, more than just spot zones. We're gonna hang it and say, no, we're not gonna spot them. Citizen George ran down the road, I know that, you're right.
Well, you do kind of wonder why there's houses on Commercial Street right where the businesses are. That feels like, you know, we've talked about his parents' house and, and changing things to feel more warm, you know, conformed. So.
And, and that, that area has gone through a transition, you know? Fifty, eighty years ago, I'm sure, single family was definitely the right thing. And now that area is transformed into more, it, it's in the middle of the city, it's the core, it's part of the commercial area. So a little bit different.
So on this one, it is a duplex, or once it's rezoned, they can do what they want? They could put four townhomes on it?
The zoning would only allow up to two.
Because of the size of.
Because of the size of.
Two.
Um, how, and, and they could still build a single family. Most likely, they, they, they wouldn't, you know? But, and, and it could sit vacant, too.
They could build a single family with.
They could buy the adjacent property and come in and rebalance and ask for a rezone if we, and, and continue to expand that. Um, I, I just, I, I wanna think about, is it the right thing to have? Do we have enough zoned RM fifteen property in the, in the city? And if, if we do, then I don't think we need to rezone this one. So how, how much RM fifteen is not built up at this point, that's zoned but not built?
Uh, I would say most of it is entitled, meaning, uh, approved in, in the process of approval on a pipeline. This whole piece is, and, and this piece, uh, is, is non-buildable because it goes down in that.
Yeah.
Gully. And then these ones by Becky are in the process. So.
And that's the only place we have RM fifteen in the city?
Oh, no, we do have it over here. And, um, I don't know that a whole lot is going on here in terms of applications, all of that, um.
So it's not built up entirely?
Well, we, we have a maxed out. Oh, these are? So these are built out, okay. It, the access behind is a little tough. And then this area, you know, it is zone RM fifteen, but, um, these are single family homes and they're gonna stay, other than this fourplex. Uh, there's a duplex there, okay. And then this piece, um, we know from history that whoever owns this is sleeping on it and doesn't talk to anyone.
Okay.
So that is, uh, most of the RM fifteen in a summary. See if I covered everything. I think we did. Let me show a photo of that. Okay, that's the first one. This is a photo of the next one. Uh, City Stormwater Basin here, lot back here, a few trees. Um, home up behind. So fairly flat, little bit of elevation to get up to it, fairly flat pad, and then just a little bit of steepness at the back end. So certainly is, is very buildable, I would say. And of course, there's utilities, all in seven hundred. Uh, should we move on to the chicken, uh, ordinance, unless there's any other questions?
Talk about chickens.
Okay, let's talk about chickens, everyone's favorite topic. Um. Okay, so we are, this is an update to the animal ordinance. I don't know why, hold on. That one is, okay. For some reason, that was, uh, labeled incorrectly. I seem to be having an issue here. Give me a second.
I wasn't here for the discussion last month, but this is a minor change, right? We're, we're just talking about lots less than twenty thousand square feet. Um, or, or is a, a bigger change than what I?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, lots less, less than, uh, twenty thousand square feet.
Sorry.
Involved. Um, because of time.
But it is a little more impactful just because of the number of people that it will affect, I think.
And, and this was brought about by number of residents, uh, requesting chickens and, um, so the current ordinance allows up to twenty-five chickens per, per twenty thousand square feet, and then additional chickens after ten thousand square feet, uh, increments. Um, also, we are missing maybe some of the best practices, uh, keeping them contained, uh, managing poop, and also, uh, securing, uh, feed. Um, rats and mice can increase if, if you just have open feed. Um, so the, the recommendation, uh, this is the current zone as is. Um, and, uh, so for every twenty thousand square feet of lot, one of the above-mentioned type of animals will be allowed, oh, okay, sorry, I was reading below. Uh, not more than any of the following are allowed, one cow or horse, two sheep or goats, or twenty-five pheasants, or chickens, or rabbits, or pigeons, or ten geese, or ducks. That's as it's written, if you have a half acre lot, if you live in a smaller lot, which is a lot of the city, and you like to have chickens, you can't, um, city council and administration asked us to look at this. And so, but they did say, let's just look at chickens. So we, before we did discuss other animals, we said, let's just circle back to chickens. We'll stick with that.
So as I'm understanding this, then, uh, most of us in the city on smaller than twenty thousand square foot lots, if we have chickens, that's illegal.
You're going to jail. No, you.
They would have chickens. They don't have a twenty thousand square.
Yeah, you, yeah, it, it is, it is breaking the city ordinance. Zoning, i- it's under land use, which is why it's here rather than maybe the police section. Um, zoning is by, uh, complaint. So if somebody had some chickens and nobody ever complained, complained, the city might not know. And we want Roe focusing on much bigger issues than chickens. So, so.
How about noxious weeds?
That, that, that's, that's how zoning works.
I hate weeds and I hate chickens. Those are the two biggest.
You like eggs?
I, I own chickens.
Okay.
But I live in the county.
Okay.
That's why I own chickens. Um, just to give you guys a heads up, I deal with a chicken complaint at least once a week, at least.
So what is the complaint? Is it that they have them, or is, are they a nuisance?
Both. So some are complaints about this guy's got a rooster. So if I go over there and there, and there are lots, a quarter acre lot, and they got eight chickens and one of them's a rooster, I give them the opportunity to get rid of the rooster, cuz that was. I give him the opportunity to get rid of the rooster, because that was the complaint. Wasn't that they had chickens, it was the rooster. If I get another complaint about the rest of the chickens, once they get rid of the rooster, then we'll address it that way. But chickens and weeds are the two biggest I get.
It's good to know.
Being a neighbor of a chicken owner, they get in our yard fairly frequently. So that's, that's something. They're also noisy. Um, we don't really smell them. Hasn't been an issue. But I always thought it was legal, so I never said anything.
You might again have to.
So this is a recommended ordinance. Uh, again, the planning commission tonight. You'll have a po- you'll have a public hearing, listen to the comments. And then you can decide not to pass this on to the city council. You can decide to make changes or recommend as is. Um, any of the above. Uh, you you could even table it if you feel like you're need to think about chickens for a month.
Since the city council asked us to look at this, I'm I'm curious what pressure you're feeling from the your constituents? To uh, I, how noisy is it? Is it three people or is it three hundred people?
I I can speak up. There's, there's a lot of people that want it changed.
And it's because they want chickens?
Because they want chickens. Because the cost of eggs in the store is sky high. Why can't I have a half a dozen chickens in my backyard?
And Morgan is kind of a country.
Not if we can build townhomes.
I, my, my thought was, well, are we gonna be opening this up to like a big problem, but um, the comment was made that I kind of like. Some of the, having criteria along with it is what made me feel, all the criteria, and I don't, I don't know if you're gonna review that in a minute, but the no roosters, the setbacks, you know, but those things, I thought, you know what, let's just put it in writing. I don't have their chickens, let's have it be defined. And somehow that made me feel better about it.
If I can make a recommendation, I would say no more than four to six, period. And only chickens, no roosters.
Great.
Four to, four to six. And then once you hit twenty thousand square feet, then it goes back to the other ordinance. However,
Yes.
It it would be nice if that was changed as well, because twenty five chickens on a half acre lot is a lot of chickens.
Yeah, right.
So. Yeah, so I wanna, if you look at the screen here, uh, you might be looking at a previous one I sent. I I made one, one change um, that I sent over last week. Um, actually, two changes, I'll go through that. So if the lot is less than twenty thousand square feet, six hens max, that's it. And you, if you look at it in terms of eggs, that could be up to maybe a dozen or dozen and a half a week. That's enough for a family. Anything more, you're selling eggs and the purpose is to have eggs for your family and maybe a few to give away. So that's where it is at six hens. Uh, roosters are prohibited in all residential areas. Uh, and actually, we could even say in in the entire city, if we wanted to do that. Um so max is six, um, and then uh chicken coops and runs with the following setbacks, so five feet from a property line and then twenty five feet from a dwelling. And that includes, I have the language here, that includes on adjacent property. So that way, if someone has the house and it's far away from yours, but it's not far from there. So a little bit of respect for your neighbors. Uh, eight feet in height, so it's not giant. Um, this idea predator proof, ventilated, uh, weather protected. And then a little bit of space for the chickens. I don't know that that's completely necessary, but and then there is a maintenance in here. And this is where the ordinance uh, really beefs this up, and we didn't have any of this before. Uh, manure removed weekly, feed is stored and containers to prevent rodents and pests. Uh, chickens must remain confined to property at all times, so you can just send your neighbor the ordinance, be like you're in violation of of ten, you know, da, 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 e. Uh, roosters are not allowed, no slaughtering chickens on residential property. No commercial sale of eggs or chickens. Um and then, you know, the violations kind of tie into the rest of the city code. Um, but we don't necessarily call out specific fines, um, which I don't think we need to, but we could.
That sounds good.
So thi- this is really, a lot of this is actually on the management and maintenance. And I think it's all very reasonable. Um, I've had chickens myself and and we did this without even, I mean, even knowing what the city ordinance was.
Well, I already thought it was legal, so making it legal isn't an issue for me.
You, you've had chickens?
Yes.
And you removed them or weekly?
Uh, I I, it was done regularly.
Not weekly?
I don't, I can't remember. It's like ten years ago.
Six chickens, they can put enough down.
But I definitely was, was taking it, spreading it, composting it, getting it, get away. We could change it biweekly, monthly. I mean, the idea is that it, that it's being managed, not becoming a problem.
Is there an appropriate or inappropriate way to dispose of it that we would need to specify?
Um.
So I, I have some more recommendations. Yeah.
Go ahead.
So we have, we have kind of loopholes in all of our ordinances. Um, and if you're smart enough, you can see them. One loophole is you're not allowed to have a commercial selling or a retail shop at your home. However, if your kids sell eggs on the side of the road, that's permitted. With with this, if if we allow everybody in town to have chickens, we need to maybe add another line in there that says on your commercial selling that you can't even have your kids sell it, just because I think it's gonna get out of control. I've already seen it, I've already dealt with it. Um, but there's loopholes. So right now, I know of two places that sell eggs, but the kids sell them. It's not the adults. And that's how they get around uh.
What other recommendations?
Can we ask Gary on that? How, Gary, how would we tweak this language?
There is some language in there about sale of.
Yeah, yeah, we do prohibit commercial sales, but to, yeah, how would you address the the kid factor?
We need to transition to our general set. Quickly.
You don't. It's, it's tough. Um, it would be tough to do that, but just say they can't directly or indirectly sell eggs. That's probably the way I'd put it. Nope. Commercial sales of eggs or chickens, either directly or indirectly are permitted unless allowed under separate home occupations. I think if you put kids in there, it's gonna be really, there's really no way of enforcing that anyway, so.
Yeah.
But could you, but could you control that by allowing number of chickens? Anyone ha- I, I mean, so I guess my question is, do you want chickens for you and your family, or do you want chickens to, for you and your family and sell the ex- excess eggs? So if you limit the amount of chickens anyone can have, is that going to take care of the commercial selling?
Part of the element is, sometimes in here, you get, you get six eggs a day.
Right.
Partier gets a dozen a week. That's the number of control.
Right.
Depending on the chicken you have. I have chickens late two a day. So.
If you got twenty five chickens in your backyard, you you've got a lot of eggs.
Clearly, they're not all for individual consumption.
Yeah.
Anyway.
All right, we need to wrap up our work session and and uh, move upstairs. Uh, thank you. Upstairs, upstairs, singular.
And I've been on. Got bailed out today, man. It was pretty good. Mayor, how you doing? Good to see it.
I don't know that.
And so far, none of us are.
Or you can slide in here if you want.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody. If you have not signed in already, please do so. Uh, that will help us out. I appreciate that. And thank you for for your attendance tonight. It's always good to have members of the community join us for these sessions. Today is Tuesday, July fifteenth. This is our Morgan City Planning Commission meeting. My name is Nathan McClellan, I'm the chairperson. And we will take uh, the agenda as outlined, um, in the, in the order, it's outlined, I should say. Uh, so the very first thing is uh, the approval of minutes from last month, so on June seventeenth, we last met. Uh, those minutes have been shared at this time. If there's any revisions, let's uh, let's talk through those. Otherwise, I'll, I'll, I'll call for a motion to approve those minutes.
I didn't see any. I didn't see anything that needed to be changed in those, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, thank you. Is there a second on the motion? All right, all in favor? I'm voting, I wasn't here. I'll just disclose that. And there's Jay, thank you. I thought you might be here today, Jay. I saw your name tag at the, uh, on the stand here. All right, uh, minutes are approved. The first item on the agenda, every July, according to our bylaws, we are to nominate and uh, approve a new chair and vice chair for this commission, the planning commission. And so we'll go ahead and do that now. We'll do either chair first, and then we'll do vice chair. So this time, I'll accept nominations uh, for uh, the chairperson for the next twelve months.
I'd like to nominate Aaron Butt to be chair.
Aaron, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Great. Any, any other nominations? Jay, any, anything on your end? All right, well, seeing no other nominations, uh, we'll go ahead and vote as a formality. Let's uh, all in favor of um, approving Aaron as the new chairperson for the next twelve months, uh, please vote now. And I see you, Jay. That's unanimous. Congratulations. You'll, you'll be doing this next month. All right, uh, let's uh, let's nominate the vice chair. And I'll accept nominations for the vice chair this time.
I'd like to nominate Dave Griffiths as vice chair.
David, do you accept the nomination? Great. Any other nominations? All right, let's uh, let's vote then, all in favor of uh, Dave as being the vice chair for the next twelve months. Jay, see your hand. It's unanimous. All right, we have our new chair and vice chair. Uh, thank you, congratulations. You'll do a great job. Let's move to our second agenda item. Now, we have uh, several public hearings that will take place. And and we're gonna tackle those separately. Uh, so we'll do that in the order outlined. The first is a public hearing for a rezone application from a residential, single-family um, zone to a residential multifamily, RM fifteen zoning designation. This is for a property located on six ninety north, seven hundred east. And uh, it's approximately point six two acres. So here, here's how I'd like to proceed. Uh, we'll have Jake um, from our, our, our city staff uh, give us a, a little bit of background uh, on uh, on, on this property and and give us some context. At which point, once that's done, then we'll move into the public hearing. Uh, we'll open that by, by motion. We'll give anyone who wants to speak a chance to speak. We'll try to keep those brief, uh, two to three minutes. And then um once uh, once everyone's had a chance to speak that wants to, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll consider this as a commission. So that's how we'll do all three of these public hearings tonight. Um, and uh, we'll, we'll go, we'll go ahead and get started. So Jake, if you want to start with this first one.
Good evening, planning commission, public. Thank you for coming. Um, I could go through a little bit of background information on this request. Um, our applicant here? Okay, just wondering to see, that way you can ask him questions later on if you'd like. So the current zone is R one eight. Um, effectively, that's R one ten per city ordinances. Um, as written today, uh, the requested zone is RM fifteen, uh, residential multifamily fifteen. Uh, and as stated, it's point six two acres. Um, it is on seven hundred east and what we call North Morgan. Um, the rezone is, I use the term compatible with the general plan. You know, general plan is broad. Um, it, it is generally looking at it and doesn't necessarily say yes or no to that. Uh, the property um, has an adjacent townhome development in process. Um, so that should be noted. Um, if it were developed, uh, sidewalks on seven hundred east and other improvements, as required by city codes, building codes and engineering, would be required. I'll get back to this in a minute. I don't see, through this report, there's not significant impacts from this. But that can be debated. And of course, as a planning commission, it's your, your role to. your role to decide how you view that. And also, you make a recommendation in favor against table or altering that recommendation to city council on it. Here is an aerial view of the property. It is on the corner of seven hundred east and Jenny Lane. Parcel view. Looking at the zoning, as mentioned, R one eight, which is residential, single-family homes next door, and then RM fifteen to the northeast and highway commercial here to the southwest. General plan has it as medium density, which is a range. And this is, as I mentioned in our previous meeting, this is a gross range, meaning including roads, public infrastructure, and so a little bit different than net density. But it is designated as medium density, and we do have in the area, single-family homes. And then we do have townhomes in the area as well. This is an older photo, and I'm going to pull up some photos. This is not. This is the other one that we'll get to later. So looking from Jenny Lane, looking east. And then there is some slope on that as it's going up. And if it were developed, we would require topo, and we will look at that to see if it does hit the the twenty percent plus. But but at this point, that that it's it's worth looking at and knowing that there's a hillside. But your recommendation shouldn't necessarily be based on that, and especially where we don't have the data. And and a rezone is is based off of land use. And there has been obviously development on on the bench, both single-family and townhome on slopes. And then here's a view from seven hundred east looking that way. And this is just kind of a run through of what we've already discussed today. So again, if it were developed, we would require topo to look at that. There are utilities in seven hundred east. And and of course, it's a major thoroughfare, so traffic would go onto that. Parking is required in RM fifteen, just like any other zone. Any additional questions for me from planning commission?
I don't have any at this point.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's move into the public hearing. I know the applicants here as well, and we'll give you a chance to speak as well. I forgot to mention that earlier. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing by way of motion. If someone would like to do that.
That's the easiest motion. Public hearing.
All right, second on the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I see your hand, Jay. Unanimous. The public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name into the microphone, and and just keep your comments two to three minutes, and and the time is yours. And we do have other public hearings tonight, too. So maybe some of the some of the people are here for that, but I apologize. I forgot your name, Wardell, but.
Jordash.
Jordash. Would you mind sharing some comments while we'll see if anyone else speaks up, but just share your vision for the project?
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for having us. Just that that corner of Jenny Lane. We initially, we have the property above it. It's it's in process to be developed right there as well, and we approached the neighbor in kind of a light manner of just saying, hey, we're going to move in and do some work here. And she's the one that actually suggested, hey, why don't you just do it right and do it all at the same time rather than piece it together? And we didn't really have that vision, but when I got looking at the at the zoning on on mahogany and great view and Danny's Way, specifically on the corner where those streets intersect seven hundred. All of the RM fifteen zoning extends down to seven hundred on those streets. And so I thought, well, maybe and across the street on this one, if you look at that adjacent property straight across Jenny Lane, it's also zoned, the RM fifteen. And so when when we looked at it with those eyes, we thought, let's just bring this to to the planning commission and see what their thoughts are. As far as the as a plan for the project, I don't know if Teresa has the ability to share her screen, but we sent some pictures of how we'd like to lay that out, and it conforms with the with the the overlay zone that requires, you know, rear entry or rear-loaded townhomes. And there's a development in parks or in Heber City that shows kind of the the design that we would like to use up there. So the the way that looks is the front of those buildings wouldn't have garages. They would just be, they would look like individual homes. And they would have front doors, and then there would be an alleyway behind them with rear-loaded garages. And I just think the curb appeal from those is, I think that's kind of the new thing. They just they just feel better. They feel less apartment, if you will, and more of living space. If you look at that front view from them from that photo I shared, if it'll pull up. It shows kind of the way those would look. And this actually, this same development shows. You see how it's sloping? That's a that's a that's a grade similar to what the grade is there. And there's an eighteen-inch step between each building, which is exactly what our slope would be. So that's the front entry. They've got the sidewalk going into a front door. They've done the each unit kind of has a specific look, so they look like they're separate units. And then if you could show the back, you can see how the rear-loaded garages kind of stepped down and they're private. Helps for parking. Ours will be better than those because we'll have two. We'll have two parking stalls in front of the garage there in addition to the two covered parking stalls in the garage. And so it'll really minimize any street parking on seven hundred east. That will be strictly for visitors and in short-term parking. And I know that coming down that hill in the winter, especially it's important to keep the parking off of that road, especially for snow plowing and such. But we we just thought it would be a good fit for that corner, and it's it's in in line with what else is surrounding that area.
Jordash, thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any questions for? For, well, I guess we'll we'll save that till we close the public hearing. Let me give members of the community one more chance to to share anything that they'd like to share. This particular development could have up to twelve units just by them by the size that it is, but the grade and and how it plays out probably wouldn't get that many. I mean, do you have a thought on that?
And and you asked per home. I mean, so probably three bedrooms.
Yeah.
I would I would guess one to six.
The idea is for new families, young families that can't quite afford a house on an individual.
Thank you.
But, you know, a couple with two, three kids.
And thank you for the question. Is there any other comments? If not, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing, and then we'll consider this as a commission.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Becky. All in favor? Jay, I saw your hand as well. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Our task as a commission is to make a recommendation to the city council. We either provide a favorable recommendation or not. And and so we're looking at, is this proposed change compatible with the land use in the areas of the right thing for this type of land, where it's located, what's next to it, the impact to the the community, how it fits in with the general plan? So those are the questions before us on on what should guide our decision as as we vote to either make a favorable recommendation to city council or not. So let me open it up to the commission, and if you do have questions for the applicant, Jordash, you wouldn't mind stepping back up if if there are any. But let's let's discuss it now.
The applicant mentioned other properties that were similarly zoned in the area. Do we have access to a map that would show us what he was referring to?
Are you referring to act like I can show you zoning map across the street and all the way down to seven hundred further down? And so we, yeah, we can't see that on this image. Yeah, I I can show you zoning, but I don't have a a single one that shows all the proposed units. There is the townhome project appear that was entitled like a decade ago. I mean, it was in terms of that far back. And then, as you men, as Jordash mentioned, they have a four unit that they've looked at on this property. And then there are some eleven units on on this property. And then also on the adjacent property here. And this is accessed via private drive.
And that private drive would be accessed off seven hundred east or Jenny Lane?
In in this case, what we're looking at is seven hundred east.
Okay.
A as shown, however, you just have to remember the the future owner could, well, any property owner owner could sit on it. They could sell it. They could develop it. They have a bundle of rights. And and so your decision is looking at all of that bundle of rights. And and I do like the idea of garages behind townhomes. They always look better that way. But you have to you have to base your decision off of general plan, all the information that you have, and and not necessarily a concept plan.
Sure. It may never come to pass.
And and I always bring that up. It's nice to see the vision, but but also you have to really make your your best practices to make your decision based off the the factual evidence in terms of an application. What information have we planned? What have we planned in terms of the general plan? What do we know about the property, the area, and all of that?
I I do have a question with the applicant already owning the adjacent property. Is this going to be a cohesive development, all of them coming up at the same time, same look and feel? That alley will extend all the way back. How how's that going to play in?
So it's not really connected. There is a parcel between. It's not really connected to that other development. Are you talking? Oh, you're talking to one above.
I'm talking, yeah, which which piece?
Okay.
Okay.
So if we, so if we if we do, we'll probably put that on one parcel. We'll combine those two parcels. Because the proposed fourplex on that lot is sitting perpendicular to the seven hundred east. And we would turn that and make it parallel and run it together with these ones. So we would, our next move, again, this is getting into what Jake said as far as concept, would be a lot line adjustment and combine that that upper development with this one, and we'd make it all one. So, yes.
That's what I was trying to understand. Thank you. From my standpoint, both sides of Jenny Lane, if we were to give a favorable recommendation, would be the same zone. It's consistent with the general plan. It's consistent with what's in the area, the adjacent properties. For for me, this feels like something that I could. I I don't see a lot of reasons not to move forward with the favorable recommendation on this piece. But I might be missing something. So I'd like to hear if there's any other thoughts on this one.
So we've got thirty-three units going in now, right? Is that true?
Thirty-two on the on the other two parcels.
And then one hundred and forty-eight up on the hill. They're not yours.
I'm not aware of those.
Yeah, so I'm just stating. The traffic on seven hundred is going to be insane, I think. I think all of that flowing out to seven hundred is, it's already, I've been there thirty-five years in these developments and made it. You sit there for a minute before you can get out. So I I do think the traffic is something we need to be concerned about.
Yeah, I love playing. Jake is a traffic study needed for a development.
That's a judgment called by the engineer, and and that comes at the time of the development. Typically, we don't see it on the smaller ones. I think we definitely would have looked at it on the hundred and forty-plus units. However, that was already entitled, and and I don't know if, did Matt look at that in terms of traffic? I don't think I saw a traffic study on that one.
He didn't request a traffic study.
Okay.
But it is going straight on to the thoroughfare.
Other considerations? Thank you, Becky, for bringing that up. Any other questions for the applicant? Well, let's move on then. I'll be ready to take some action on this. But whether you're feeling favorable or not favorable, now's the time to make your motion.
Did you close the public hearing?
We did.
Okay, thank you.
There's either more to discuss, or let's let's get ready to vote on something.
I can make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to make a positive recommendation for the rezone request on six ninety north, seven hundred east to the city council.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate the taking action. Is there a second on the motion?
I think considering that it's consistent with the general plan and that it's surrounded by RM fifteen, I I can second that as well.
Okay, thank you. Before we vote, is there any discussion on this motion? All right, let's vote. All in favor? Please vote. All opposed? So we have one nay and five ayes. Motion passes as sending a favorable recommendation to the city council. I thank you. We'll move to the next agenda item, which is a very similar project. This is also a public hearing for a rezone application from residential, single-family to residential, multifamily, and RM fifteen zoning designation. This is a property located at five hundred eighty-two north, seven hundred east. And this piece is approximately point two seven acres. We'll we'll proceed just like we did with the first public hearing. Jake will start us off, and then we'll open the public hearing. Those that want to comment can comment. We'll close the public hearing. We'll vote as a commission. So go ahead, Jake.
Okay, so also, R one eight, effectively, R one ten, requested zone is RM fifteen, as stated, point two seven acres. It is on seven hundred east, just down the street at five eighty-two north. Same comments in terms of this area is compatible, general plan and transportation. In terms of some historical research, looking at Google Earth, going back thirty years, I haven't seen any buildings on the property. Just want to state that. Maybe it was used for farming or playing or having fun on or storing things. So there's all kinds of that, but no buildings. And my understanding is that there was a school there a long time ago. Very long time ago. And the gas station. And, and the property is not adjacent to RM 15, but is close. A lot of times in planning, the discussion is not just what, what we call spot zone, where you have a single parcel by itself. That's a rule of thumb, but is not codified, meaning it's not a city ordinance saying you cannot do that. So it, it is a judgment call on it. As mentioned previously for the other one, if it were developed sidewalks and other improvements would be required by engineering building codes and Morgan city ordinances. Staff doesn't see a significant impact if it were developed, could be up to two units as we look at the ordinance. However, your recommend, your recommendation on this should be based on the facts. Could be a single family, could stay as is, or it could be multiple units. You know, up to two as we see it per, per code. Adjacent is city property. That's the stormwater basin. And then it's one lot in. There's the parcel. Seven, one, seven, eight. Zoning, this is what we talked about, how it's close, but not adjacent. So R1A in this area, this yellow, RM 15 and green and highway commercial nearby. There it is in the general plan, medium density. So a full, a photo from Google a few years back. And then let me go to, this is from today. This is from looking across the city property, which is stormwater basin. And then across the street. So fairly flat with a little bit of steep on the backside and a few trees. And then just kind of a, a run through of that. At this point, we don't see a sensitive lands issue, but again, we, if it were developed, we would look at topo to see if that was an issue. And I believe our applicant is here. So if you have any questions for him, any questions for me in terms of staff report?
I think that's a good orientation. Thanks for setting the context. At this point, we'll transition to the public hearing portion. For those that just joined, if you haven't signed in, please sign in at the front. So that we have record of your presence here. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing by way of motion. Who would like to do that?
I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Who will second?
We'll second.
All in favor? All right, the public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to comment, please step to the podium, state your name and share your, your thoughts and try to keep your comments to two to three minutes. And we'll proceed that way. So time is yours. Is everyone here for chickens?
I'll be your first stoplight.
Question.
Can I make one comment first?
And, and in terms of, it's good to receive all the public. I was gonna say, in terms of questions, it's good to hear all the public, the public input, close the public hearing and then respond to questions.
Thank you.
So my name is Jill Boss. I live over in Red Rock neighborhood. And I just had a question about the strip along 700 East there between these two proposed high, higher density housing. If, if structures that are along that roadway are historic structures and we keep pulling them into RM 15 and wiping them out. That's one of my concerns is that the historic properties that we have in here in Morgan are going to keep going away. So that's my concern that I'm raising from my point of view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to share a comment or thought? I know we have some joining us virtually as well. So raise your hand if you'd like to join the conversation virtually. Would you mind stepping to the, the podium and just sharing a little bit about the project from your perspective?
Thanks, I'm Corey Adams. We've owned this property for just over a year, maybe closer to two years. The idea of it is we, we took a look at the surrounding properties. We looked at 700 East as well. And looked like the, the city has been favorable and, and visiting some RM 15 properties as other applicants have had them. So we look at that. And, and our idea there is to be able to have two livable units for families. Then also, I know we've talked about, a little bit about affordability is to try to help reduce costs that way to allow folks to live there. I think it's appealing to be able to have something like that where it's not full of apartments, to be able to have some space for folks to be able to have a yard and do things like that, be able to have a home. And so our vision for that is to be able to have two livable units for it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Well, we'll bring you back up when we close the public hearing if you have questions. Thank you. Last chance for anyone that would like to comment on this particular agenda item. Now's your chance.
I am Brett Boss, also on Red Rock. Just a question on RM 15 itself. I mean, I've heard a lot of times where city councils have rezoned something to RM 15 and then it immediately changes hands. And apartment buildings go up or whatever can maximize the space goes up. So I, I know that may not be the intent here. But sometimes that's the most profitable way of things, you know, of development happening. So I, I'm a little concerned about that as well. How is there any way, I don't think there's any way we can, you know, hold anyone to their intent as of right now. And so I'd be concerned that that could snowball into much larger things that may not be intended at this point. That's my concern.
Thank you for sharing that concern. We'll, we'll share some comments when we close the public hearing. Anyone else?
I apologize. I'm running late to make love on my voice. It's a little messed up right now, but I just heard just recently, there was a meeting about chickens tonight. So I'd voice my opinion on chickens. I'm in favor of chickens on smaller pieces of property. If you've never had chickens, super beneficial.
We'll have a, a, in just a moment, we'll open a public hearing.
I'm still, we're on that topic still?
Can you tell? You're early enough to catch chicken conversation. I love the enthusiasm. And it's a lot of fun having more people in the room. It's usually just us staring at each other. So thank you for being active in your community, our community. All right. I think we've exhausted the comments. We're excited about chickens. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
Thank you. Who will second? Thank you, Becky. Appreciate that. All in favor? The public hearing is now closed and, and we'll, we'll now take this up as a commission. And our task, similar to the first one, is whether to send a favorable recommendation to the city council or not with respect to this proposed zone change. And what we're looking to do is make that determination on whether that's the right use of the land based on, on how it's being used today, what the vision is in the general plan. What's adjacent to it? What makes sense for this, this property? So we'll be considering that. Just a, a couple of things from the, the comments that came up. And Jake, I don't know if you want to address some of those, but the, this, we'll, we'll consider, just like any developer applicant comes in, what we'll consider. It's their piece of property. They, they can explore their options on what they want to do with it. And I, I, there, there's not anything that's inconsistent with the general plan that I'm aware of. That area that you're talking about between Jenny Lane and this piece of, this proposed property is in the general plan. If you want to pull up the general plan map. It's, it's our, it's designated as medium density. So even though it's only zoned in pieces as RM 15 and some single family. The, the, the general plan, the long-term vision does have that area as, as medium density. Now, that being said, I, I don't think there's any desire for any of us to see a historic building come down. On, on the other hand, if that's what the owner of the property does, that's what they do there. That's their property. So we, we can't stop that. I forgot the second question.
I don't think we've seen historic buildings on 700 East being demolished for new developments. Teresa?
In my years, I haven't seen anything on that.
Okay, we haven't seen that. And then the other question, I think it's a, a good one is, is could this snowball into something more? That would require additional purchases of property and, and rezone, and then it could grow as a town home project. But, but the RM 15 is limited to that. And, and this is a single parcel that they're asking about. And so we have to, you know, base our decision on, on the facts that we have on it.
The short answer is that size of property, the most units you could put on that's two.
So even if it was sold or somebody else.
Right, that's right. Now, the only way you could get more is by buying adjacent property and then having those rezoned as well. All right, I think we addressed the questions. Thank you for bringing those up. Now our questions. My, my concern on this one, I realize it's, it's near the other property that we just sent a favorable recommendation for. I, I, I struggle with it just being on its own. And I, I know the long-term vision that we just showed the general plan is to, you know, include that area. So it's appropriate from a general plan standpoint. From a zoning standpoint, I'm, I'm trying to understand what the, what, what the issues would be with having the spot zone concept of having a hodgepodge piece of property that's, that's not adjacent. I mean, it's close, yes, but, but not adjacent. And, and as a, as a city, what precedent that might set for other property owners. The applicant indicated that, you know, coming to us because other property owners have done this. And, and I don't want hodgepodge parcels around the city, you know, being converted necessarily. At least that's, that's how I see it. It feels like it's more thoughtful when we can take adjacent properties and, and through accretion and natural organic growth, it, 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 it starts to realize the general plan. I, I don't know how, how I feel. Well, I kind of do know how I feel about it just happening one off like this, but I want to hear other, other thoughts. Maybe I'm hung up on something I don't need to be hung up on.
So if we rezone that 1015 and the property next to it goes for sale, we'll kind of have to rezone that one then too, right? And then the next one to that, we'll have to rezone that.
In, in theory, we'd look at each one individually and base it on the same criteria that we're trying to base this on. But that's the idea is that, yes, let's make consistent criteria on is it consistent with the general plan? Is it consistent with the uses that are adjacent to it? But yeah, that absolutely could happen.
I think it sets a precedence.
In our planning meeting, Jake was able to zoom out on this view. And, and I like to look at things a little higher level, Jake, or Teresa, do you have the ability to go back to that map view that we had there and zoom that out?
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted context from a higher view. And we're talking about this bottom right-hand corner. I don't have any additional comment on that. I just wanted to see that view because that view impacts my opinion and I'll, I'll save that for when that time comes.
Thank you, Jay. Other issues, concerns with, with this, this proposed rezone?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Gary, please.
Could I make a comment? Just to clarify what a spot zone is. A spot zone generally doesn't just mean that a parcel is zoned in the middle of other parcels that are not zoned the same way. But what makes it a spot zone is when the city has not placed it in their general plan for a change in zoning at some point in the future. So a spot zone would be an area that is zoned, everything around it, not the same zoning. But in addition to that, the primary reason it's a spot zone is because the general plan does not show that it is going to be zoned out in the future. And so that, that's the difference between a true spot zone and piecemeal zoning you're talking about. Zoning happens. It happens and timing is an important aspect of how you move forward with your general plan. And so it might be the right time to rezone a parcel of property that is surrounded by property that's not zoned the same way, but still is in the master plan. It's going to be zoned the way that this parcel has, has applied for rezoning. And if that makes sense, so what it is, it's a progressive process. And the planning commission essentially is looking at, at the timing. If it is all general planned for this zoning, they're looking at, is the timing right? Are the surrounding uses similar? And most importantly, is it consistent with the general plan? Because if it is, the term spot zoning is really not accurate.
Okay, that, that helps clarify that a lot. I appreciate that. Just, just real quick. I'll go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and, and by having this as medium density in the, in the general plan, it's not to say that it's all town homes or all single family. Just a variety together in, in an area, not, 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 the, the goal is not to move everything to town home. That certainly is not the goal, but to have a variety and a mixture of housing types within an area.
I was just gonna share.
And particularly residential, that, that's what this means is kind of medium residential, which is single family up to town home as, as we've had over the last few years.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And, and I appreciate that. I, I was just gonna add that the general plan has been recently refreshed. We were operating from a 25-year-old plan up until last year and we spent the entire year working through the general plan, getting that, getting that approved. It had a lot of community input and sessions. And because of all the effort that goes into creating a general plan, there's a lot of deference given to that. And so Gary, I appreciate what you're sharing. You know, where we have a fresh general plan that's suggesting that this is, this is a consistent, you know, maybe in, in this case, it's not so hodgepodge. It, it's how we do this as, as property, as, as property owners come in and, and we have an opportunity to realign that zoning with the general plan.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I do think Jake makes a significant point, though, that the goal is not to move everything to town homes. That we, we did have the intention of maintaining a variety of housing. And I'm concerned that this isn't adjacent to other properties and that if we do start, per Becky's point, it will just all snowball into town homes. And I don't think that is consistent with the vision of the, the general plan.
You had a comment, Dave?
Yeah, and, and this might be more appropriate, this question for Gary. And I think I know the answer to it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Is it possible to rezone it? Based on the the proposed vision of the developer at this point? And if it ever changes and or changes hands. Is it possible that there would be something that would cause it to be rezoned back to where it was at? I mean, because I like I I like the vision of what's been been proposed. But would that be? I mean, is that a possibility?
So the answer is no. Can't. There's no recall on that. However, as long as you're on the 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 planning commission, if an applicant came in for the next door property, you could say we. We discussed this and we don't want to see that rezone next door where there's an existing single family home. And and you could vote no on on that. So so certainly there is that. But. No, I mean, when someone buys a property that comes with a bundle of rights and and as properties are rezoned or ordinances are changed and. Even with chickens, there's a bundle of rights that comes with your property.
So. I I guess along those lines, then. Why wouldn't we just rezone that whole section in in between there? Instead of just taking it one parcel at a time? Can you do that with? With existing property owners that don't have an interest in that, or they only do it when they ask?
It'll be requested.
It has to be, because the city can't just rezone someone.
The city can, the city can, and you could do that. But typically, the the practice is, and I think. In Morgan, the practice has been is is let. Property owners. Drive that how they want to change. But I want to hear what Gary, how he would respond to that as well.
No, that's a good way of putting it. Private property rights are important, and sometimes what we do. With an aerial view of things is not consistent with what the property owner wants to do. And so we try to follow what the property owner wants to do by. Essentially rezoning upon request. However, is does the city have the right to rezone? Many parcels of property according to the general plan today? The answer is yes, you do. City Council has the authority to do that. But traditionally in Morgan. We've not done that unless it's. There's a critical reason for doing it.
When the R one eight was changed to R one ten, that's an example of of the city just doing that. You know, with as we're looking at the downtown, we're talking about ordinances and things like that. That may be a case where the city says, we want this area to grow in a certain way, so we're going to proactively. It's that's where you want to proactively. There's the proactive and then there's let the market. Look at it and and also is it compatible with with the general plan? And and all their conditions.
Okay, thank you. That helps. What else?
Thank you, Gary. Gary's explanation of spot zone was was helpful. I don't foresee I don't see that as a spot zone at this point, based on Gary's conversation. A concern by some has been the whole seventy eight turned into town homes. The current owners. I don't think are gonna hold that peace long enough for the next three people to sell their homes. I could be wrong, but I don't foresee those next three people selling their homes. To Adams is. Well, absolutely, they're gonna put duplex in there. I mean, that's like a two by two home. I used to have a family live down the street that had some duplex on had apartments on mixed and had apartment above a home. And I didn't find that offensive. Now, some people that live in. Fancy new neighborhood. Seem to have found that offensive, but as explained earlier, we're seeing a lot of folks with fancy homes. Rent their basements out and yet two families live there anyway. I don't see a problem with a duplex there. I don't see it's getting any bigger than that because Adam's aren't gonna wait long enough to buy the next the next house out and demolish the house. So I I don't see a problem with that.
Thank you for that, Ray.
They have comments. So what Jake said, I I think was a really good point. I think that's actually the advantage of. Just doing this one parcel at a time because it kind of gives you a little more control. And there's only so much he can do on that, but then when the next one comes up, we could say no to that one. So I I do like that.
I'm far more comfortable. With this not being. A true spot zone. That's just this piecemeal. Out in the middle of, you know, something else that doesn't make sense. That helps me a lot on on this. Any other? Discussion items on this project? Or not project, this rezone application? Well, let's uh let's make a motion. On whether or not to provide a favorable recommendation to the city council. And let's do that now, then. You're stirring, right? Do you want to make a motion? Hey, go ahead.
It doesn't sound like anyone's making a motion, so I I guess I have more comments then. Because I know how I feel, and I think whoever makes the motion sets the precedence. So. I'm compelled to make a motion, but before I do that. Just some of my comments on that are, I think if you zoom in close enough to any of that stuff, you'll find an element of hodgepodge is some of the terms we've used. I mean, none of that is a perfect square, a perfect circle. So. For me, stepping away from. That thought process is important. Also, the owners. That want to improve the land, we we've talked about property rights and things like that. It's a vacant piece of dirt that's. Not very useful right now. And if somebody wants to come in and improve it and make it livable for people, then I support that. I think that's a great thing to do with vacant land, develop it and make it better. And when I when we zoom out far enough on that map, that whole zone looks at risk to me. Of higher density over time. And in a hundred years from now, I can see that whole thing being green. So. If I'm. Limiting my view in the moment. And things like that, then. I can find excuses and things why. I want maybe want to fight that, but it doesn't seem logical to me. So. Like I said, I do think whoever puts the motion forward, it's important because I think that it's feeling like the. Votes are gonna be pretty close here, so I'm gonna proceed with a motion. We'll see how it goes. I would. Recommend a. Positive recommendation. To the city council to approve the rezone request of five eighty two north seven hundred east.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate the comments and the motion. Does someone want to second that motion? Thank you, Ray. Before we vote any any further discussion on this motion.
I just wanted to say one thing. I am absolutely not against a duplex. In fact, we have an apartment that we made for our mother in law. Several of our neighbors have apartment. My problem with it is. It's all gonna get changed once one changes. And as a resident of that neighborhood, I'm kind of fighting that. And I see he's right. That's the future of it. We'll be dead probably, but that's the future of it. So I still think I'm gonna fight it.
Thank you, Becky. Any other discussion on the motion? Let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of the motion as Jay outlined to send a favorable recommendation to the city council, please vote now. That's four ayes and all opposed. That's two nays. Motion passes as far as sending a favorable recommendation to the city council. It is noted that was not unanimous. So city council may want to take that into consideration as well. Thank you. We will now move to. The the exciting agenda item for for so many people. Not that duplex isn't exciting. I want to send the wrong signal here. But this is this is a public hearing. We are proposing an amendment. To ordinance ten dot one six dot zero nine zero. With respect to farm animals and in particular with regards to chickens. So. Again, we'll proceed in the same manner with the public hearing. We'll have Jay share the proposed language for the the amendment to the ordinance. Once we have that context, we'll open the public hearing. All of you who'd like to share your thoughts about. About this change, please do so, and and then we'll we'll close and we'll we'll take action as a as a commission. So Jake, if you would share that with us.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Thank you, members of the Public Planning Commission. So the city council asked the planning commission staff to look at the farm ordinance. Particularly with the use of chickens. And so this is just looking at chickens only. The current the current ordinance allows up to twenty five chickens. But you must have a lot of twenty thousand square feet or greater. There are a lot of. Single family home lots within the city that are smaller than twenty thousand square feet. And effectively chickens are prohibited because they're not allowed on a lot. Less than twenty thousand square feet. So I'm gonna just gonna go straight to, we'll call this a. A proposed but draft ordinance. And. This is the existing ordinance. As mentioned. And then proposed. Ordinance, so. First three sections are the existing as is. And then moving on to chickens, section four. Lots less than twenty thousand square feet could have up to six hens. Roosters are prohibited in all residential zones. It could even be changed to. The whole city. If we don't see a need for it in in commercial. In other areas or ag. But I did focus on residential because of, we do have some ag zoning. Setbacks are five feet from. For a chicken coop, five feet from the side and rear property lines. And then also twenty five feet from any dwelling. And that's goes on both sides of the property line or fence. So. Before you build your chicken coop, if this ordinance were in place, you would need to make sure that you're also twenty five feet from your neighbor's home. Being cognizant.
Definition of a run.
A run is just an enclosed area or.
It's a pretty hefty fenced backyard. They have to have a secondary fence that meets the setback. They can't go to the boundary fence.
Or 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 just the chicken coop. The the ordinance is that they have to be enclosed.
Yes, but if they want them to run free.
Yes.
Then they have to have a secondary fence.
Yes. According to as written. Coops. Cannot exceed eight feet. In height or a hundred twenty square feet. And and the reason for some of the six hens and all that is just to keep it at a small neighborhood. The purpose is not to have many egg farms. Or to be selling eggs and and commercial production of eggs, so just to keep it small. Especially remember, we're looking at less than twenty thousand square feet. Eight thousand, ten thousand, twelve thousand square foot lots. That the coop be predator proof, ventilated, weather protected. There are some, if you know, two square feet of per chicken or four square feet of run. And then. In terms of maintenance, which what we've heard in preparing this, that's important. That the chicken area be maintained and clean and sanitary. Removing compost. During our staff meeting, there was the question about, do people really remove it once a week? Is that actually too much? So maybe the term is regularly remove it. So we don't have to say weekly, but or it could be left. Also, as we prepared this and had conversations with planning commission, this item came up in terms of. Making sure that. That feed is stored in some kind of container so that rodents and pests are not getting into it and and growing that population in the city. Also, just that chickens need to remain on the property and. Not visiting your neighbor crossing the road. That was a joke, but.
I got it.
Okay, roosters are not allowed, no slaughtering your own chickens. Take it down to Bingham's or somewhere else to do that. And no commercial sale of. Sales of eggs. And I did add this text indirectly or directly. Based off of Gary's comments. Enforcement. Just complying with the nuisance provisions of Morgan City Code. So we we do have nuisance ordinances in terms of. Noise and harassment, all those kinds of things. And then in terms of enforcement would be fall in line with the rest of our code. So that's the draft. It's it's quite a bit more than what we've had in the past, but the idea was. Let's just establish some parameters if chickens are going to be allowed on. Lot sizes less than twenty thousand square feet and. The aim was to be specific, but also reasonable. I've had chickens myself and. And I think it would have applied to all of this.
Thank you. So I just just to recap some of that. We're talking about this because our elected officials are hearing from their constituents that. That this is something that they want, and they've asked us as a planning commission to look at it. This is where we're at. It's chickens have been allowed by ordinance already, just not on smaller lots, twenty thousand square feet or less. And so that's really what we're addressing is. With this ordinance that would legalize that with these stipulations and. Maintenance standards, which we didn't have before. And so that that's just our best practices from other. You know, chicken keeping. Jurisdictions. So. With that, I thank you. Appreciate it. We will. We're ready to tackle this foul topic. Well. Let's let's open a public hearing. That was for you, Jake. Let's open the public hearing, and then when we do that. Please, those that would like to comment, step to the podium, state your name. And just share your comments, two to three minutes, if you can keep it brief, that'd be helpful. And then we'll we'll keep that open as long as you're you're sharing, but we need to open the public hearing by way of motion. So who would like to do that?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Who will second? Thanks, Aaron. Let's vote to open the public hearing. All in favor? The public hearing is now open, so those of you that are here to talk about chickens, the time is yours.
Thanks for letting me restand. I jotted down a few notes. I'm sorry, I'm not that prepared, but. The new proposal, the the draft makes perfect sense to me and coincides with everything I just put down. Six hens is super reasonable. Obviously, some people don't like roosters. I do, but I'm a morning person. But it all makes perfect sense on the smaller lots. If I could add to that some more positives to what's already been mentioned is. Price of eggs. Insect control. Great for my grandkids. I could go on and on about the positives, but for somebody who eats eggs every day, it's it's a huge benefit. It also helps our citizens because we do encourage our folks to be self sufficient, and it certainly helps along those lines. The the only derogatory I've even heard in regards to chickens, again, would be noise, but that's been addressed. With the lack of roosters, hens are hens don't make noise. Roosters do. People have brought up the smell. Dogs certainly smell a lot worse than chickens, and we allow a lot of dogs. Chickens are so easy to maintain with minimal care. With a little bit of sand, a little bit of straw and the proper coop, which again, we've addressed addressed in the draft, it would not be an issue. And in to top it all off. For folks that have never actually sat and watched chickens, if you'll watch chickens ten minutes a night before you go to bed. It's 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 really good therapy. It'll cut down on the drug abuse and alcohol and other things. You'll you will sleep better. I'm telling you, you'll sleep better if you just watch your chickens at night before you go to bed. So there's a lot. The positives far outweigh the negative, and again, the draft is really addressed. To me, what the negatives negative concerns or or output was in regards to chickens. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mike Loveland.
I appreciate your comments. And good to have that on the public record, the the therapeutic benefits. Thank you. Who else would like to to share?
Joshua Bergman.
Joshua Bergman. My wife sent me in. She's at the temple. Anyways, I think the 120-square-foot condo should be mandatory, so every chicken coop should be a minimum of 120 square foot. I like that idea. But as for the roosters, I mean, we have elementary school kids that raise roosters and take out to the county. And they win prizes for them. And a lot of these kids don't live in on property that has more than 20,000 square feet. So we start taking stuff away from our kids. We're a farming community. I mean, I got a rooster two blocks away from me. Every time I hear him crow in the morning, I'm like, I love living out here in the country. Let's not take the country out of Morgan. I mean, they might be developing wild satchels and throwing all these anti-country legislation in there, but that's not us. I mean, let our kids have roosters, take them to the fair, win their prizes. I mean, shoot, I was born and raised here. You know, I'm not going to have a pig in the city, but a chicken? Chicken's not hurting nobody. And roosters, be quite frankly, my rooster's quite friendly. I go out to feed my chickens and he likes to jump up on my arm and about the nicest bird ever, and I'd hate to have to get rid of him. But we are a farming community. Let's not get rid of that farm feel to it. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Except for the 120-square-foot building. I could bring that up with my wife and put a condo back there for him.
Well, that that's the max, but.
I said, that should be the minimum.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Who who else would like to share?
My name's Wendy, Wendy, excuse me, Wendy Turner. And I don't know if you talked to the animal control person, but a lot of the things that I shared with her are in your thing, which I'm really happy about. I'm going to give an opposing view. I hate chickens. And I grew up with them and I despise them, to be honest. I even come under tractor supply. All of their things were chicken-themed this year, and I told them I was disgusted by it. Anyway, one of the things I'm concerned about, how big is 20,000 feet? Give me an idea of like a house that would be that size. I don't I I don't understand that. Half acre? Okay. Per lot, okay. And that has to be away from the the neighboring house, right? Five feet, okay. And how do people, how do people know about these rules? How are they? How are they going to find out this information?
Just if you could just state all your questions, your comments, and then we'll we'll respond after.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know how this this information is going to be disseminated to the to the people. How they're going to find out what they have to, what rules they have to follow. When I came home, I had lots of little special things left on my porch that the neighboring chickens had left for me, special. And trying to clean that off every day was really a drag. And another thing that I I wanted to do was a rooster in in Yuma, where I also live, they have a special temporary permit that they get for FFA and 4H animals. So they, because they don't keep them year-round, only for when they're getting ready for the fair. But I do think that it's important. I like I like the fact that they're you're talking about the composting and and the feed be stored in the insect-proof and rodent-proof containers. I think that's very important as well. But I just want to make one other thing, too. If we can do something about the peacocks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tony. You are, step to the mic.
As a city council member. So are we still saying it over 20,000 acres, I said 20,000 acres, 20,000 square feet, you could have 25 chickens? Is is we still saying that?
This does not affect the the current ordinance. But but if it comes to you, then you could make a recommendation to change that.
I guess my only thought as I sit here is if you have 20,000-square-foot lot and you've got 25 laying hens back there, you've got a lot of eggs. And you're not going to allow those to be commercially sold. So I guess I'm sitting here going, what are you going to do with all those excess eggs if you have that many chickens back there? Just a thought.
Thanks, Tony.
My name is Gene Bills. We've lived up here for about 30 years. First of all, regarding his, isn't that already a law? Or isn't that already?
Yes.
Okay. And so what's your concern on that?
I just, well, my concern is we're not going to allow them to be sold if you can't sell them to your neighbors. What are you going to do with those eggs?
Well, if you're over that, you can sell them, can't you?
Well, you give them to your neighbors. You give them to your neighbors. You can give them. Yeah, you can give them. Yeah, you can give them. Shut that down, man. Good point. Yeah, my neighbors love that now.
All right, let's let's limit the cross-talk.
Sorry, I just.
We'll address them all together.
I'm for the chickens. I agree with the gentleman that was here earlier that I think they can be therapeutic. I think they, being able to raise your own chickens and have your own eggs and and stuff is good for the community. To be honest with you, I didn't know this was an issue until my wife read something on Facebook. I thought you could have chickens here. I, because we're in the country. So when I heard that, I was like, what? What do you mean you can't have chickens? I like the proposed, you know, rules and stuff that you have. I think that would, you know, work well for the smaller homes. Yeah, I think you you can raise them without the smell. You can have them enclosed. They can still be cage-free. I mean, they're in a cage, they're in a run, so it's not the same as the chicken farms that mass-produce eggs, which is what what I'm against now. Anyhow, that's all I have to say.
Appreciate you sharing. Thank you. Who else wants to weigh in on this?
Can the mayor make a public comment?
You are a citizen of the city.
I love chickens. I don't have any. But I love chickens. I think, Roe, that's one of your top complaints is roosters. So it's sort of in the same category as a barking dog. Those that love roosters, that's great. But what what? I think what this whole thing's trying to do is to allow smaller lots to have some chickens. And so unless it's a complaint, then Roe doesn't patrol the neighborhood and count your chickens. We ought to have a cat rule once in a while, but we don't. So that that's what I'm saying is the whole purpose of this was so we had a resident that wanted chickens on a smaller lot, and they weren't allowed to have it with the with what we had as the current ordinance. So this is just a change for those that have a smaller lot to have some some hens, I'll put it. And that was the whole purpose of it. And I think it's a positive. I don't know. I know Roe's a hard worker. And it's no fun to go tell somebody that your neighbor complained about whatever. So right now, it's it's a good thing. And if you have 20,000 square feet, then if you can maintain 25 chickens, it sounds like that's still the rule. And then with that rule, on a smaller piece of property, you can have four to six. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Up to six.
Up to six, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may.
So you brought up no slaughtering your own chickens. We had taken them to Bingham's. So Bingham's doesn't have a fowl license. Now, or does anyone have a license to slaughter your chickens here in Morgan County? Or Weber County, or no longer in Salt Lake County either? Just FYI on that one, so. I know the, you come to my yard, you'll see something that you wouldn't like. Because I do have one rooster. I love my rooster. But when I have newborn roosters, I give them six weeks. But I did try to find out, find a place here locally that could slaughter chickens. I guess there's a special licenses required. So maybe we should look at the wording on that.
The wording does say outdoors, so you can slaughter them indoors.
Thank you. I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. What other comments are there? Come on in. The public hearing for the chicken agenda item is open, so if you'd like to make a comment, now's the time.
Okay, first question, how much is 20,000 square feet? How much land is that?
State all your questions, and then we'll we'll answer them after you.
Okay.
But we have answered that previously. It's almost half.
Okay, someone's already asked that. Sorry, I'm coming late to the party. I am for chickens. I like them. I have a lot of them. They're good for for your land. I'm not, I'm not ready to speak or anything, but I'm for it, okay? I think it's a good thing. And I hope we're not we're not limiting people to have animals. That's that's no good. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Please remember to sign in.
Thank you. Any other comments from those that have come to talk about this agenda item? Want to make sure everyone has a chance before we close the public hearing. All right, let's close the. You may.
I'd like to hear from some of the audience, your thought on number of chickens, somebody that have chickens in your yards. I'd like to hear some of your thoughts on numbers you have.
I think I'm on close to 20,000 square feet. But we keep 12. And the way we rotate them, every three years when they stop laying, we get rid of six and then bring in six new ones. So there's always six hens that are steady laying. And then those six we get rid of. Well, can't say it out loud, I guess, huh? But with my 12, when they are laying, I know when egg prices got expensive, my neighbors really loved me. So my daughter, she has autism. And she's the one that wanted the chickens. So she takes care of the chickens and then she goes and she has a little delivery route. She goes, we give the eggs away in exchange for egg cartons. So it's kind of a a good deal right there. We get free egg cartons and then they get free eggs. But when the egg prices got high, having those 12 chickens were quite nice. But we have 12 right now, of which two are roosters, getting ready to be slaughtered because I only like one. Hey, that's all I got with that one.
Does that satisfy your questions?
I was curious if I had two, three, four, five, seven. I don't know what the good number is. I was trying to analyze that piece.
The 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 number six was based off of maybe an average and then having not a lot of eggs, you know, getting into the commercial part, you know, what would a family have? And yes, they all could be laying, or no, they couldn't. And six was deemed reasonable. Talked about it with administration. We did have some discussion on it. However, there is no magic chicken number. But certainly eight or 10 or 12 deemed too much to staff and admin in terms of wanting to keep it simple and, you know, backyard-friendly.
Thank you. Let's let's close the public hearing unless someone jumps up right now. So who would like to make a motion in that regard? Thanks, Becky. A second? All right, I appreciate that, Dave. Let's vote to close the public hearing. All in favor? Public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Did you jot down all those questions?
I do have some of these down. Question was, how will this word get out on this? Obviously, it'll be on the city website, which is public knowledge. But also, I'm in favor of we could put together like a one-page flyer and send it out with the utility bills like we've done with other public notices, when we have an open house or workshop. So I think we would take the same rules and put it on a single page and send it out and get the word out. All in favor of that? That's if it went forward. Peacocks are not allowed because they're not mentioned in the ordinance. However, ordinance could be modified. But if there is a peacock issue, then then animal control should be notified. But but it's not.
Clarify on that, does the existing language talk about specific animals or animals of similar size and type?
It says animals allowed, and that's it.
Because I thought it said animals and fowl not specifically listed may be substituted for those listed of similar size.
Okay. Well, maybe you also make a recommendation that we take that that sentence out so that we are specific. I don't I don't know what other animals or fowl would be substituted, but I guess there is an argument there that that because of the substitution are. But if it's one one issue, then that's something. If it's a lot of people complaining and coming in. So do we hear peacock complaints often?
So we have had peacock complaints. The difference between a chicken and a peacock is we've allowed a peacock to be four chickens. However, a lot of the zones, like the houses, because of the ordinance, aren't, the lots aren't big enough. But we still do have mink farms that use peacocks as protection. We also have a daycare on the north end of Morgan that uses peacocks for protection from rattlesnakes. So we would have to be really careful about taking peacocks away because of that issue.
And examples you're citing, do they fall in in the 20,000 square feet or greater?
The the problem that I've been seeing with peacocks is them roaming. You know, neighbors that don't like them on their front porch and stuff like that. So that that's the only complaints that I've had. It's not that they're destroying stuff. It's just the neighbor doesn't want them.
And and how this ordinance is written is that these rules would apply to all fowl. So in that case, the cleaning up, the containing, all of those things would apply to any type of fowl.
Peacocks don't live in a coop, though.
Well, they need to be contained on a property. I mean, I I I know they roam. I've I've seen them.
They can't be contained.
Well, it still is the owner's job to find it, or someone could take a hatchet or a gun to it or something. I don't know. Anyway, if you own that peacock, you're responsible for it, I guess, is what I'm getting.
It's kind of the same as a cat.
It's kind of the same as a cat. They're going to roam, but if they get into trouble, they get into trouble.
Sure.
And if somebody complains, then it becomes an issue. I don't think we need to specifically address peacocks at this point.
Peacocks that I know of are being used for protection.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead. So I got, I was confused by, uh, Tony's comment about selling. I thought this was just for, um, I thought this, the no selling was just for the smaller lots. Is that, is that for all?
So, yeah, yeah, how the ordinance is written is that, um, the current ordinance that it says conditional use permit for a farm industry as set forth in this title. So if somebody had a twenty thousand square foot lot and they applied for a conditional use to essentially run a, a mini farm and sell animals or eggs or anything, they could do that. Do we get that much? No, we, we, it, it isn't happening, but it is allowed and through a conditional use. That's where, actually it would come back, I think, to the planning commission or, or, but that's where you look at maintenance or, you know, there, there's some regulation tied to that. I- if it is being run as a commercial use. As written the draft, anything less than twenty thousand square feet would not be sold.
And just so you guys are aware, the current, the current ones that are selling eggs are children. Like the kids are selling the eggs. It's not the adults.
Uh, Jake or, or our distinguishing force officer, help me understand the problem with someone selling eggs. I don't understand the, the implication of the problem with that.
The only problem I saw with it is we're, we're basically doing this to allow people to have six, on smaller lots to have six chickens. If we then say you can go ahead and sell from a small lot commercially, that's just going to encourage more than six chickens. I mean, basically, if the idea is to have six chickens for eggs for your family, that's okay, but if you're going to try to sell them with only six chickens, that doesn't make a lot of sense, so.
But with six chickens. So part of the year I get six or seven a day. My family can't eat that many. Part of the, part of the year I only get four or five a week.
Consider that. It's just. Firm to the six chickens on a small lot then.
The question is still, I need an answer. I need to help understand what's the problem with me selling chickens? I have six chickens. I have more eggs than I can eat.
I would say nothing other than it's going to be limited to six chickens.
I can help Ray with that question. Um, the problem is, is Morgan City has another ordinance that you have to have a business license to do anything from your home. Your home has to be zoned for certain things. You, you've got usages on that residence. Um, it becomes a, it becomes a, a business license instead of just selling eggs. So you have the other ordinances in place.
Business license, there also may be is, uh, like county health department, you know, you're, you're in the food production business for other people. It's one thing to take on your own risk. Not that eggs are a high risk, but there probably is some risk to it. And then certainly there's the risk of you're selling that and, and so it does add to that. And so I think that's where, and, and Dave had a good point of you keep it small and just give them away, Ray, when you get chickens after this.
But those factors should be in play, even if it is children who are selling them, correct?
So we have an ordinance that, that basically says children are, are able to sell on the trees with no limits. So they can, they can sell anything they want, as long as it's children selling. Um, cookies, vegetables, fruits, it doesn't matter. That's how the ordinance is written. So if we needed to change that, that's, that's something that we would need to look at. But that's how the, the, the ordinance is currently written.
G- Gary, do you have a comment on, on that?
How big of a problem is it? Let me, let me just explain that. The, the simpler the ordinance is, the better. Because we, we, uh, we don't have an unlimited ability to enforce these things and otherwise our poor enforcement order, uh, officer would probably be going nuts, you know, enforcing all these things. And so the simpler the ordinance is, the better off it is, you know, if you're um, going out looking for kids selling eggs or, or lemonade, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be very good. Uh, public relations wise, but, uh, it's also just pretty much a waste of time in a lot of cases. The other thing is, is that, uh, things like, um, inspecting somebody's, uh, chickens so that, uh, you're sure that they're, they're not cleaning it up on a weekly basis. Really what we're trying to catch is we're trying to catch the odors, we're trying to catch the smell. We're trying to c- catch the nuisance factors. And, um, it, to the extent that you can limit the ordinance to those nuisance factors is going to make, uh, enforcement a lot easier. So I don't know that that answers the question, but I, I wouldn't put anything in here that you, you don't want to go around enforcing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, tha- thank, thank you. There was another comment that was shared during the public hearing about, um, uh, making sure we're not limiting people's rights to have animals and and I just want to clarify that the whole point of this, right now it's not legal for lots under twenty thousand square feet. We're trying to expand the rights and, and make it legal for them. So that's the whole point of the, the ordinance. It's a good comment, Gary, about keeping it simple. I'm hearing next, uh, bug in my ear thinks it might be a little complicated. I, I think, I, I, I don't mind it as, as is in my opinion. Most of the complication is just in some, some standards. And even though you can't enforce it necessarily, at least it gives you something that, you know, when there's a complaint that you can come back to.
Mr. Chair, I want to be clear. I think, I think what Jake has put together is, is very simple. If you've ever looked at Leyton City's ordinance, you'd go, this is a, a breeze compared to that, so. It's, it's a very good ordinance.
Um, but you don't feel that way? I want to hear your thoughts.
Um, there's, there are two sides of the coin. One is you put in to get a big ordinance, so it's got a lot of stuff, scared tactics, we haven't ever read it. The other concept, nobody's ever going to read it anyway. Their pieces becomes a situation where the enforcement officer has to deal with what the complaint is. It was listed, he can address it. I guess what I would like to do tonight, and I'll save this motion for later, would be to table this with the intention that yes, we want to do it. I'd like to have, but, um, Row have input on this with Gary and determine whether this is usable for enforcement reasons. Whether this is not essential. Cause I could add a bunch more stuff as far as nesting boxes and run in the coops, all kinds of stuff you could add to this. My thought would be to table this with it and then that Row have input with Gary and Jake and Teresa to come up with something that's, if they, if they want this complicated, fine. If you want it simpler, then I'm okay to, to have you guys go through that.
All right, I'd like to hear you weigh in now, if that's even necessary, or if you feel like this is, um, you've already weighed in and, and this is, uh, okay to move forward.
So my, my concern would be if and, and it's, we're a, we're a reactive, not a proactive city, so if s- your neighbor called and complained, do we have the information laid out in an ordinance to support me knocking on your door? Right now, it's pretty vague. You, you can have a cow, a horse, twenty-five chickens. In our current ordinance, it says nothing about roosters. So roosters would fall under the noise nuisance. It does say chickens in our current, doesn't say anything about roosters, so to have, to have a, a, a larger ordinance would be better just in case there is that time I have to go knock on a door. I'm, there's no way I'm going to go inspect coops, count chickens, go by daily to see if somebody's cleaning poop up. I don't have time. We don't have the funds. We, we just, we can't do that. But if it's written out, if there is that case, then we have at least a, a, a backing of some kind.
But what are you looking to, to get, Ray? If you feel like we're premature on, on trying to codify this, uh, new right for owners of property less than twenty thousand square feet. Uh, is, is there something specific that you feel needs to be, um, dived in a little deeper or, or what's the concern?
I just want Row, I just want to have Row's input on what he needed, what he didn't need. I, I had to stay to put in big ordinances where most of something's not needed. If Row needs it, I'm okay with that.
It all, it all depends on the if. Like we've, we've got a lot of ordinances that, that we've talked about changing and it's because there's loopholes in just about everything. And if we have it written down and we, we have a, a stone ordinance for it, we have, we have a little bit of backing, at least on the legal side of things. If we don't have that and I go over there and, you know, hey, you gotta, you gotta clean up your chicken poop. And they can't smell that, but the other neighbor can. Is it really a nuisance or is it just the neighbor hates the other neighbor?
So let, let me ask this, Gary. If, um, i- if we, what, what, what action do we take on this? We recommend it to?
Make a recommendation, uh, in favor of or against.
So let, let's say, let's say we make the, let's, let's say we make a favorable recog- recommendation with, um, you know, additional, um, input. Can we even do that? Uh, in other words, the public has to see what the ordinance is before it goes to the city council, right? We, we can't just say we approve this version or we're favorable for this version sending it to the city council, but it may change a little bit in, um, you know, in the two weeks uh, before it goes to them. I mean, what would the city council want? Do they want it to be the final version before we send it?
So you can, you can change, uh, Mr. Chair, you can change the, the, the ordinance maybe changed at the city council level. You know, if there are additional items that they wanted to include, the city council can do that. There, it, it's really not required that the ordinance uh, be forwarded by you in exactly the form that was brought to you at this meeting. You can add whatever you want. You can take whatever you want out. And then at the council level, they can do the same thing. And so if there is some tweaking that needs to happen to this ordinance, it could happen between now and the time that it actually hits the council and I'm sure they'll have their own ideas of what they want to do with it. But the idea is to advance this to, you know, so that they can take a look at it. And I think you've done a really good job of, of considering the issues.
Well, I, cause I, I just assumed not table it and, and move forward. Um, in, in my opinion, I think it's pretty buttoned up. I don't own chickens, so maybe there's other considerations, but I'm a, my neighbors own chickens, so I'm on the receiving end of what some of these things might address and it seems like it would to me. So, I mean, I, I don't think we're sending a half-baked ordinance to the city council. I, I think it's, I think it's ready. If anyone else feels differently, then we can consider tabling it, but I think it's ready.
Oh, well, let me just weigh in that I agree. I, I like it. It's good. It's clear. It's straightforward. I think it does a good job of making it possible for people to have chickens, which we want to do in a rural area. But also providing adequate protection for people who don't want to be nuisanced by that. So I like it. I would feel comfortable recommending it.
Okay, other, other thoughts?
I, I like it too. I don't know that we've addressed her concern. Okay, okay, so it's probably going to be up to you, right, to call you if you still have chicken poo on your porch.
All right. Let's, uh, I think as a commission, we, we've got a lot of, a lot of info. We've discussed this quite a bit. And, uh, I, let, let's make a recommendation, one way or the other, to the city council. Uh, who would like to, um, create that motion?
I move that we make a favorable recommendation for approval to the city council.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion? Thanks. Um, before voting, again, uh, like, like usual, let's, uh, see if there's any further discussion.
Another question for Jake. Jake, on number one, this is, this, as this is subsection B of this section, I don't see where that's at. Do we need to take that out as we're proclaiming?
Yeah, I think that would be good. This is from the previous ordinance, so I didn't, didn't mess with that, but it is, so. What you could do is just advise staff to look at it and if we see that it's not actually referencing anything, then we just make a recommendation to cross that out when it goes to council.
That wasn't the motion. Motion already made without that.
Would you like to amend the motion?
Want me to do it? I move that we recommend this to the city council for approval after a review by staff to catch any typos or editing oversights.
Thank you. And Becky, do you still say? Okay, any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Um, all in favor, please indicate. Uh, motion passes unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to the city council. Uh, thank you for that and thank you for all of you who came and sat through this.
Thank you.
Thoughts, appreciate that. Uh, we do have one more agenda item. Um, this is with respect to a release of easement for the Pheasant Run subdivision phase two. So, um, you're going to have to remind me, Jake, on this one, what, what easement we're referring to.
Gary's going to go over this item.
Okay, Gary, go ahead.
You've been here a long time, so I'll make it as quickly as we can. It's, this is.
Could you take your conversation to the hallway?
This, this is an informational item only for the planning commission. Uh, but what has happened is, uh, Pheasant Run subdivision phase two along its northern border had a, an access easement, you might remember. Uh, very contentious access easement at one point.
For, for emergency vehicles, right?
Actually, it was for, uh, the maintenance of the ditch.
Okay.
There was an irrigation ditch along there.
So we're not talking about coming in off of, of Island Road?
Um, it comes in off of three hundred three west.
Three hundred west is Island Road.
Oh, okay, sorry. Anyway, it comes off of three hundred west and comes all the way across the, uh, the north part of the lots in phase two, but now the property north of that has been subdivided and is being developed. And so, um, those ditches have been relocated. Pipes have been relocated and the easement is no longer needed. And so, uh, the city is going to release the, the access easement if the council approves it, um, along the north side. And so, um, and then, uh, phase one will, will do the same thing after it is developed, but right now it's still in agricultural use. So this is just a release of easement, a general release of easement. We've checked with the recorder and they, they, uh, are fine with releasing them all at once with a single, uh, release of easement. And so that's, uh, we just wanted to let the planning commission know. Um, since this was on the plat, that, um, it is going to be released by the city and the city council will be asked to consider that at their future meeting.
Gary, I'm still confused. What's, the plat's up on the screen. Uh, what, what are we releasing? What, I don't see the easement.
Oh, okay, if, uh, the arrow.
The back property line?
There you go. Uh-huh. Yeah, you got it.
Okay, so it's right on that back boundary and we're, we're saying that that ditch is being re- relocated anyway, and so they don't need the easement anymore.
Yeah, it's actually being piped. The water's being piped now, so. The water's being piped now, so.
Gary, what, is this, what's the, how's the drawing changed? Is it, does a new one need to be created or is it like white out? Or is it just, I'm just curious, like the legal part of how the document would be changed after this, if it were approved?
That's a good question. So the document will be changed by subsequent release of easement that will be recorded against each one of those lots. So rather than doing a drawing, there, there's a document called release of easement that will identify each of those lots and identify the, the easement that has been abandoned or, or released.
Well, I think I understand that now. Thank you.
Sorry, a little confusing, but.
No, it, it makes sense. So this is really just an administrative item.
Correct, yeah.
Go ahead.
What was along, along the back of each of those properties, the top side of that? Each of those properties had an easement along those properties that deal with the ditch. That they couldn't utilize that property. Some of the fenced, some of them not fenced. So track me if I'm wrong. I, so what this does, it gives, that easement goes away and those properties now have ownership or use of their properties all the way within their property.
Yes.
That correct, Gary?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me. So I realize this is an agenda item and we make a motion to do this. Is there any reason we wouldn't? Like, I, I don't understand if it's just kind of a.
Yeah, actually no motion is required. It's just an informational item for the planning.
Okay, it says, says motion.
Oh, does it? Sorry.
Gary, I posted it as it says discussion slash motion, cause I wasn't sure.
Okay.
I was saying it has.
So, so the city can just do this? You don't need us to take action?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect. Okay. Consider us informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, that does take us through our agenda. Any final thoughts before we adjourn? And this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Great job.